This prerecorded video presentation is for the September 3rd, 2024 Oxnard City Council Meeting. I am Oxnard Police Chief Jason Benitez, and the title for this appointment item is "Police Department Update." The recommendation for this item is that the city council receive an update from the police chief on a variety of current public safety-related topics. Of note, this is simply a receive-and-file, and there is no action required by the council. As we begin this update, which will cover a variety of topics, I would first like to present our police department's three principal guiding priorities. The first, community safety; the second, community engagement; and the third, developing and maintaining a culture of success. These guiding priorities have been in place for the past several years, and we use these to guide our organizational strategy and decision-making. On the topic of crime in Oxnard, for several decades, law enforcement agencies in the United States have reported their crime statistics to the United States Department of Justice using the standard reporting system, or SRS. This system is being retired. Oxnard Police switched to the newer National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NIBRs, in November of 2022. NIBRs is considered to be more comprehensive and is now the new national standard for reporting crime. The year 2023 was our first full year reporting in NIBRs. There are several differences between these two systems, the principal differences being: SRS only reported eight index crime types in two categories: violent crime and property crime. Under violent crime, there was murder, aggravated assault, robbery, and rape. Under the property crimes category, there was burglary, larceny, which is also known as theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. NIBRs expanded the index crimes from eight to 71 offenses and added a Crimes vs. Society as another category. Crimes vs. Society includes crimes like narcotics crimes, vice, obscene material, weapons violations, as well as animal cruelty, among other offenses. NIBRs now includes domestic violence listed under aggravated assault. This was not previously recorded as such under SRS. Because of this, we can expectantly see an increase in the number of reported aggravated assaults each year. In incidents involving crime, SRS only reported the most serious crime. This was limited, as there could have been multiple offenses. For example, in an incident that started off as burglary but ended up as a homicide, the homicide would have been the sole representative offense. In NIBRs, offenses are stacked on top of each other when reported. So, given the differences between the systems, it becomes more complicated to compare 2023 to the preceding years which were under the SRS system. However, in this presentation, we will demonstrate what we believe to be a reasonable approximation in terms of comparing previous years to 2023. In looking at the crime of murder, Oxnard had seven murders in 2023, which is actually the lowest annual number since 2001. Our highest recorded year was in 1979 with 25 murders. Of note, the year 2003 had 22. Of the seven murders from last year in our city, five involved the use of the firearm. In six of the seven, there was some type of relationship between the suspect and the deceased. Oxnard's homicide rate per 100,000 persons is approximately 3.5. The national average is currently 4.8 per 100,000. In California, robbery is defined in Penal Code Section 211 as "taking property from someone else's immediate possession against their will, using force or fear." This crime type was previously recorded in the SRS system under Crimes Against Persons. Under NIBRs, robbery is now placed among crimes against property. The Oxnard Police Department reported 259 robberies to the Department of Justice in 2023. More than one-third involved the use of a personal or bodily weapon, in other words, hands, feet, or fists. A firearm was reported to be present in another one-third of the robbery offenses. In accordance with NIBRs reporting standards, this includes when a firearm is suspected but cannot be confirmed. Crimes against property comprise the clear majority of reported crimes, and they drive the overall crime picture. Property crime is also the most preventable. In this slide, we would like to show how crimes against property compared between 2022 and 2023 in our city, based on similar offenses between the standard reporting system and NIBRs. In general, reported property crime in our city decreased by 1.2%. Burglaries, which are generally consisting of automobile burglaries, residential, and commercial burglaries, decreased by 16.2%. Meanwhile, motor vehicle theft, which has been a persistent crime type in our city as well as across the state, increased by 9.2% in 2023. I will speak to this more in our next slide. As you can see in this graph, stolen vehicles are relatively lower than in earlier years. There was a significant dip in this trend during the second year of the COVID pandemic, and it appears to be trending back to pre-COVID years like many other crime types. As Oxnard experienced a 9.2% increase in the number of reported stolen vehicles last year, the statewide motor vehicle theft rate increased by 7.5% in 2023. And it is important to point out that from 2018 to 2023, the statewide motor vehicle theft rate has increased by 28.5%. On this slide, you see the National Insurance Crime Bureau's top 10 stolen vehicles in the United States last year. What this list shows is the number of these vehicle types that were reported stolen last year for every 100,000 vehicles in the nation. And, like general theft, especially thefts from vehicles, nearly one-quarter of Oxnard's stolen vehicles could have been prevented. This includes the victims leaving their keys in the vehicle, or worse yet, leaving the vehicle running while unattended. This next slide refers to the 10-year reported crime trend in the city of Oxnard. When comparing similar offenses between 2022's standard reporting system and 2023's National Incident-Based Reporting System, Oxnard experienced a 7.2% increase in overall reported crime, with 327 more crimes reported that year. That equates to less than one more reported crime per day during the 365-day year. In taking one step back and looking at the longer-term crime trend picture in Oxnard, you'll see this slide, which goes back to 1992, and shows Oxnard's historical reported crime picture. The year 2011 was the lowest year of reported crime in this city. The year 2023 is the fourth lowest. The takeaways from this slide show that as we stand today, we are among the lowest of years. We have seen some upticks which appear to be a reversion to the pre-COVID mean. Shifting away from crime, traffic safety has long been a concern in our city. A look at injury and fatal collisions in Oxnard show that they are holding relatively steady in terms of their annual numbers. The year 2020 was an exception, as many people remained at home during the COVID pandemic. 2023 saw a noticeable 10% reduction in injury-traffic collisions, but it still held steady in terms of its number of traffic fatalities. We are currently on track for another year that is consistent with prior ones. A closer look at Oxnard's traffic fatalities, that is, 16 deaths in 12 separate collisions, continue to demonstrate the importance of pedestrian and bicyclist safety. Pedestrians and bicyclists accounted for one-fourth of the deaths and one-third of the collisions. This is an improvement from the year 2022, when these comprised 10 out of 17 fatalities for that year. With regards to this year's count of traffic fatalities through the end of July, Oxnard PD also has two additional fatality reports not shown here, because one involved a bicyclist that was outside of our reporting area, and a second fatality was later determined to have been a suicide. The most common causes of fatal car accidents in the state include distracted driving, driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs, speeding and moving violations such as illegal turns, failure to yield right of way, and running red lights. Looking at the Office of Traffic Safety statistic rankings, Oxnard is among 60 California cities in a bracket of similar populations. Historically, Oxnard has wavered from being the leader in crash rankings with this group and has fluctuated over the years. The Office of Transportation Safety issues these rankings, with 21, 2021 being their most recent. The number that you see here in red is the 2021 ranking. The lower the number means the higher the ranking. In other words, this is something we don't want to be number one with. The number in parentheses shows the previous year's ranking. I'd like to speak a little bit more to some of the efforts that we're doing to promote traffic safety. This slide depicts some of the focused enforcement efforts that our department undertakes to improve it. The photos at the right highlight efforts to address bicycle and pedestrian safety, motorcycle safety, and DUIs. Now that schools are in session, school zone safety becomes an added priority. The police department currently has three grants that provide additional funding for outreach and education, and enhanced enforcement to address alcohol and injury collisions, speed-related issues, bicycle and pedestrian safety, and reckless driving. The first is a California Highway Patrol grant, which offers grant funding through the means of education, prevention, and enforcement of laws related to driving under the influence of alcohol and other drugs such as cannabis. The Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, known as the STEP Grant, uses funding to continue implementing strategies to make our streets safer by conducting enhanced enforcement operations to address primary collision factors such as speeding, distracted driving, failing to yield right of way, and unsafe turning movements. This grant also funds traffic safety presentations at community events, public meetings, and schools. The purpose of this outreach is to promote awareness regarding bicycle, motorcycle, and vehicle occupant, and pedestrian safety. And, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Grant furthers the effort to increase safety through outreach and enforcement, but also partners with traffic engineering. As driving under the influence, or DUI, is a significant collision factor, the police department takes efforts to enforce DUI laws. This includes arresting drivers for being under the influence of alcohol as well as drugs. Drugs can also include illegal narcotics or legalized substances such as cannabis, prescription medication, and even over-the-counter medication. Taking DUI enforcement seriously, the police department applies each year for grant funding to address this problem, and includes not only enforcement but outreach. This funding also makes our sobriety checkpoints and directed patrols for DUIs drivers possible. The next few slides talk a little bit about our education and outreach efforts. This slide categorizes a number of different ways in which we try to get the word out to improve traffic safety by increasing the education level and awareness level of our public. This includes regular news releases, public service announcements, whether on social media platforms or on radio, social media posts, live streaming events, virtual ride-alongs, various presentations, community meetings, and even school visits. On this slide, you see an example, or a couple of examples, of our online outreach efforts. At left is a gallery from Oxnard Police Department's YouTube page, which shows a menu of a number of different educational and informative sessions and videos. And on the right is a bicycle safety awareness video that was recently done. We also have a Facebook page for our Spanish-speaking community. Facebook en Espanol has over 7,000 followers and is a great way for our public to stay updated. We also provide public safety awareness videos in Spanish, such as this video concerning a new law known as daylighting. On this next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about this new law. We would like to remind the public about the new California Assembly Bill 413, also known as daylighting, which is effective on January 1st of next year. This new California state law will help increase the visibility of pedestrians and bicyclists that are entering crosswalks. This bill will help address California's pedestrian mortality rate, which is nearly 25% higher than the national average. Daylighting refers to a law that prohibits stopping or parking your car within 20 feet of a marked or unmarked crosswalk. When there is an extension of the curve in the road, vehicles are required to maintain a 15-foot distance from the crosswalk. When drivers park their vehicles near a crosswalk, the visibility of vehicles approaching that crosswalk is greatly reduced. Drivers are more likely to hit bicyclists or pedestrians in crosswalks due to less visibility and having less time to react to those entering the roadway. Children are particularly vulnerable because they are shorter and more likely to be non-visible behind parked cars within 15 feet of a crosswalk. The Oxnard Police Department will soon start enforcing this, beginning with warnings. Now shifting gears to the topic of a court decision and homeless encampments. On June 28th, the United States Supreme Court held Grants Pass versus Johnson in favor of preserving local control and upholding local ordinances that regulate camping on public property. The Supreme Court held that the Eighth Amendment's cruel and unusual punishment clause does not prohibit the enforcement of generally applicable laws regulating camping on public property. The decision overturned a previous lower court decision in Martin v. Boise on this same issue, which for over five years limited the abilities of cities to address encampments on public land. During this time period, Oxnard saw the number of encampments proliferate in some areas as options became limited. As a result, Oxnard passed an ordinance that was able to enforce the camping prohibition at very specific locations, focused primarily in the area of downtown and some nearby parks. Now, given the court decision, I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to the police department's approach towards addressing homelessness and encampments. The high court's decision restores a tool for law enforcement to deal with homeless encampments. It increases the law enforcement ability to make arrests and expands options. Now, with that said, it does not in any way mean that we will default to an arrest as the first option. We believe that this would lend to creating an ongoing cycle of moving homeless people from one location to another, followed by displacing them a short time later. Nothing gets solved this way and is not an effective strategy given limited resources and very limited support systems. Though there will be instances in which enforcement is the most appropriate option, the Oxnard Police Department will continue placing priority on collaborative and supportive methods, partnering with social services, housing, healthcare providers, and other stakeholders to connect those experiencing homelessness with resources and support. That continues to be our first line of approach in dealing with this societal problem. Regarding this slide, I must first point out that I am precluded from advocating or opposing legislation in this venue. I bring this item to the attention of the city council, as a number of California mayors and city council members across the state have drafted resolutions or have taken public positions on this initiative. My objective for this slide is to provide a general overview of Prop 36, which is on November statewide ballot. Some background for Prop 36. In 2014, California voters passed Proposition 47. Some of Prop 47's main points included reducing personal drug possession from a felony to a misdemeanor. Prop 47 also raised the grand theft minimum dollar amount from $400 to $950. $950 also became the minimum amount to charge a felony for shoplifting, forgery, vandalism, or writing bad checks. Fast forward 10 years later, Prop 36 seeks to overturn some parts of Prop 47. Prop 36 seeks to increase punishment for some theft and drug crimes in three ways. The first being that it would revert some misdemeanors back to felonies. Prop 36 makes this crime a felony if a person has two or more past convictions for certain theft crimes, such as shoplifting or burglary. The sentence would be up to three years in county jail or state prison. Second, Prop 36 would lengthen some felony sentences. For example, Prop 36 allows felony sentences for theft or damage of property to be lengthened by up to three years if three or more people committed the crime together. And third, it would require some felonies be served in prison. For example, as discussed above, sentences for selling certain drugs such as fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamine can be lengthened based on the amount sold. As it stands today, these sentences are served in county jail or state prison depending on the person's criminal history. Prop 36 generally requires these sentences be served in prison. Prop 36 also allows people who possess illegal drugs to be charged with what is referred to as a treatment mandated felony, instead of a misdemeanor in some cases. Specifically, this applies to people who, one, possess certain drugs such as fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamine, and, two, have two or more past convictions for some drug crimes, such as possessing or selling drugs. These people would be sent to treatment, and those who finish this treatment would have their charges dismissed. And lastly, Proposition 36 requires the courts to warn people that they could be charged with murder if they sell or provide illegal drugs that kill someone. Which brings us to the topic of overdoses. In 2023, over 100,000 people in the United States lost their lives to opioid overdoses. In Oxnard, the trend upward continues, as evidenced by police department responses to overdose calls, as well as our increased application of naloxone, also known as Narcan, to overdose patients. This slide shows that this problem continues. Our police personnel began carrying naloxone in the year 2018, and during that year, there were four instances in which our officers administered it to an overdose patient. The next year, there were nine instances. And as you can see, as time progresses, that number continues to trend upward. So as it stands today, there are more than 20 times the number of naloxone applications as there were during our first year. And up to this point in the presentation, we've covered homicides, traffic collision fatalities, and opioid overdoses. This chart shows the magnitude of fatal overdoses, most of which are from opioids. As I have said in previous presentations, each year opioid overdoses eclipse by far the sum total of homicides and traffic fatalities in our city. This slide shows 77 fatal overdoses in Oxnard in 2023, and over 60 of them were caused by opioids. In light of these startling statistics, I would like to share something positive. Now, in my report last year, I showed what it was like for police to respond to an opioid overdose. This year, I would like to mention a success story in the ongoing fight against fentanyl in Ventura County. Last September, Oxnard police officers and emergency medical services personnel responded to a report of an overdose victim in the restroom of a gas station on Gonzalez Road. Officers and EMS personnel performed CPR on the victim, but he did not survive. Toxicology results showed a lethal level of fentanyl was the cause of death. The police department's Drug Enforcement Unit conducted an extensive investigation into this incident. Detectives processed evidence, interviewed multiple witnesses, served several search warrants, and ultimately identified Rodney Ray Yanez as the person who sold fentanyl to the deceased. With the assistance of the Ventura County District Attorney's Office, detectives obtained an arrest warrant for Yanez for second-degree murder and several narcotics-sales-related offenses. This investigation marks the first time in Ventura County history where murder charges were filed against a person who knowingly sold the deadly synthetic drug fentanyl to a victim who overdosed and died. Shifting gears to the topic of technology. At the police department, we realize that we need to modernize and improve our technological capabilities in order to become more efficient, as well as improve our service to the public. Better technology saves time, increases our ability to manage information, as well as solve criminal investigations. It can also increase not only officer and employee safety, but also the safety of the public that we serve. Technology is not intended to replace humans nor downsize our workforce on its account. Our largest technological project concerns radio communications. As we have reported to the city council on several past occasions, Oxnard's radio communication infrastructure has been lacking for a long time. We've been working steadily to implement an operation that provides our officers and staff with reliable radio communications and the ability for other agencies to communicate directly with us. This interoperability is critical, especially in times of emergencies or disasters. So we've been seeking to join a county-wide subscriber plan, which consists of a number of local agencies. This radio project is moving forward quickly. Through ARPA funding, we acquired handheld radios. These APX 8,000 radios have been issued to all police department employees that would normally carry radios. Mobile, that is vehicle-installed radios, will begin in the late summer. We recently signed an MOU with the county work group that governs the radio infrastructure project. We are attending meetings with the county to set up talk groups and interoperability channels. The contract for installing hardware for the 800-megahertz system that we are using as a backup is in its final approval stages with the city. And our current radio console vendor is building and programming the upgrade to our current system and expects to have it deployed by Q1 of 2025. This is very good news. The final piece is a connection from Oxnard to the county of Ventura. This connection will be both through fiber-optic cables and microwave frequencies for redundancy. This will allow our radio system to connect to the county system so dispatchers in the dispatch center can hear and talk on the system from their consoles. And also, it's important to point out that our fire department is also working with us, as well as the Ventura County Fire Department, to develop an interface that will link the county's computer-assisted dispatching system with Oxnard's. This will streamline the flow of information on fire calls and improve communication, which is absolutely vital when lives are at stake. So with that, I would like to thank our city council for supporting our effort in this very significant project. The next four slides cover the subject of Drone as a First Responder, also known as DFR. On July 23rd, 2024, the Community Services, Public Safety, Housing and Development Committee authorized the police department to explore the development of a Drone as a First Responder Plan for the city of Oxnard. This presentation is a mere preview of DFR. The police department plans to represent this subject in a number of venues over the coming months, including a more detailed presentation to the city council. Since 2019, the police department has flown unmanned aerial systems, also referred to with the terms UAS or drones, in what is known as a UAS response model. This means that drones are stored and carried by designated police officer pilots. This also means that some officers have them in their patrol vehicles. When a situation develops, whether it's planned or otherwise, that is suited for the use of drones, they are brought out and flown. The Drone as a First Responder model is an The Drone as a First Responder Model is an innovative, newer concept in policing and takes their application to another level. In DFR, a network of drones placed in pre-positioned automated nests are ready to respond to calls for service. A nest is essentially a weatherproof, climate-controlled box from which a drone takes off. When called upon, the nest opens and the drone launches. After completing its flight, the drone returns to the nest and lands in it, and the doors close. The inside of the nest is actually a charging pad that readies it for its next flight. A drone's battery can be recharged from 0 to 100% in approximately 40 minutes. Nests are placed in secured areas, with city property being preferable. The intent with the nests is to provide as much coverage over the city as possible. Obviously, more nests mean more area coverage. Police drones would be remotely operated by an FAA-licensed officer from a command center at a police facility, such as the police station. This slide shows what a potential first phase of a DFR deployment plan would look like, and what areas the city it would likely be able to cover. In the DFR concept, a determined number of nests are placed across the city, in this case, three. With regards to the conceptual deployment arrangement that you see here, we would like to point out that the city of Chula Vista, the first DFR city in the nation, began with a phased approach in implementing nest sites and expanded them as the program demonstrated its success. As you can see, the circles are concentric with some overlap. This is preferred, as it shows that a drone could be deployed to an area from more than one nest site. This affords better versatility and an alternate option if a drone from another nest is not available due to its charging its battery or being assigned to another call for service. Another thing to point out with this slide here is that the conceptual deployment is driven by data, as we strongly subscribe to the "facts matter" principle. Deployment models are not based on race or socioeconomic demographics of neighborhoods. They are not also, they are not based on feedback from one or more neighborhoods that may have complained about aircraft traffic. We've also taken service population into account. The importance of this is that it covers areas that have relatively higher service populations. This essentially boils down to locations where there are more people, there are more calls for service for public safety resources. What you see here is a heat map that aggregates call for services and shows where the greater demands exist. The warmer the color, the more calls for service are generally received from an area. Also, a configuration model takes into account the locations and availability of potential nest sites. This slide highlights some benefits of having a DFR model. As we are aware, one of the City Council's strategic priorities is to maintain 911 response times. DFR has been shown to clearly support that, as they can fly directly to a call location, not having to navigate through city streets and traffic. They're often the first public safety resource that arrives on scene and are able to provide vital information to other responding resources prior to their arrival. This is a great increase in not only officer safety, but to community safety. I say this with one clear-cut example in mind. There is a video from the city of Chula Vista from a few years ago, in which a drone was sent to a man with a gun call in front of a taco stand. As the drone arrived on scene, it quickly identified the subject of the call and saw that he was waving around what appeared to be a handgun. Officers were still en route to this call, that could be considered a very hazardous situation. Prior to the officers arriving, the drone pilot watched the man actually open the pistol, then light his cigarette with it. Realizing that this is a lighter, this immediately deescalated the situation and greatly reduced the risk of a lethal encounter. Having a DFR program in place, even if not operated on a 24/7 basis, would reduce callouts of drone pilots, thus showing some reduction in overtime costs. To provide some perspective, drones were used 115 times in 2023, and, as of the end of July of this year, have been flown in 123 occasions. As mentioned before, in coming weeks, we plan to meet with organizations and community groups to discuss this, as well as to receive and listen to their input. We plan to return to the City Council later this year with a more detailed report and And now, an update on the staffing situation at our police department. Staffing continues to be a pressing challenge to law enforcement agencies across our nation. It is important for us to keep the conversation going about police staffing. In past updates to the City Council, I mentioned that staffing has been a historical challenge. As I report to you this year, that still holds true. Despite some gains and losses, we are still hovering near a 10% vacancy rate for sworn police officers. These are unfilled positions. When we add the unfilled positions with the numbers of officers that are out on industrial injury leave, are on modified duty, or other types of leave, such as family or military leave, the impact on operations is amplified. In addition to hiring sworn officers, hiring and retaining quality public safety dispatchers has also been a big challenge. This time last year, our dispatch center, which processes incoming 911 calls, had eight vacancies out of its 22 positions. That was an alarming 36%. Since then, we are very pleased to report that we are down to only two vacancies and are still pressing forward to fill the remaining vacancies. Also of good news, as of a July 30 snapshot, the police department's complement of 127 professional staff positions has only six vacancies at this time. We anticipate this number will fluctuate slightly, but it is safe to say that we are in a much better place in this regard than last year. One of the big drivers for our sworn vacancies is the steady decline in police officer applicants. The chart that you see here shows a 53% decline in applicants for police officer in our city between 2017 and the end of last year. We are currently on track for about the same number of applicants as last year. There are a number of drivers behind the reduced number of applicants that I have previously spoken about, but it is important to point out that this is consistent with the state and national picture. And this slide is worth mentioning again. This concerns the extended onboarding time for police officers and dispatchers, which is extensive, and it is up to 18 months. What this means is that when an officer or dispatcher separates from us, it is that much time until a replacement can be recruited, trained, and then set to work. This slide speaks to our department's sworn hired versus separated statistics. Ideally, we would like the blue columns to be higher and the red columns lower. We had some successes, to the point that by the end of the year 2022, we had reduced the number of sworn vacancies from the low 20s down to nine. However, within a very short time span, separations and retirements began to take their toll, as can be seen in the year 2023. This raises the question of why officers separate from service. Next slide. This chart is an overall look at our sworn officer separation trends from 2019 through July 30 of this year. During this time period, 132 sworn officers left our agency for a variety of categorized reasons. The most prevalent category is service retirement. That is, someone who works for the department long enough to be vested for a pension and is of retirement age. Our minimum retirement age is 50 years for those PERS Classic members who were hired before January 1st of 2013. For those officers hired after that, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act applies a new formula, and their retirement age has been moved up to 57 years of age. As it stands today, 56% of our filled officer position are PEPRA. And when factoring in our vacancies on top of that, up to 66% of our total authorized sworn positions are PEPRA. What is important to point out is that during the mid-1990s, the size of our department grew very rapidly, and we hired scores of officers then. What we are seeing now are those officers reaching the age of 50 or more and retiring. Resignations account for the second-largest category. This spans a variety of circumstances, but typically includes those who resign from academy programs, those who are not yet able to retire but resign and go work at another law enforcement agency, and those who resign just to get out of law enforcement altogether. A small percentage of those who resign to go work at another law enforcement agency choose to seek reinstatement with us, provided that less than one year has passed since their separation. Probation terminations, about 22.3% of this graph, include those officers and public safety trainees who are not performing to expectations during the academy or during their first year on the job, and we are forced to let them go. Medical retirements are those typically based on a condition sustained while on the job, such as an industrial injury. The remaining categories, termination, in lieu of termination, and deceased, make up 5.8% of the separation picture. Of note, we also took a snapshot look at 2023 and 2024 to see how many retirees go into a second career and in another pension system, as well as those that resign to do the same. In 2023, a total of six officers separated to go work in another system, and thus far this year, four have left us, with a fifth one pending. We also took a closer look at entry-level officer attrition. That is, recruit officers and why they separated from service during either the academy or during their field training or probationary period. Between 2019 and July 30 this year, Oxnard PD hired 88 entry-level police officers. During this time period, 45% of them did not either successfully complete the academy, field training, or their probationary period. Our examination shows that 55% of these recruits were lost in the six-month academy program. I do want to emphasize that this is not an indictment of the academy program. The leading reasons why recruits did not complete this program included their not being physically fit to satisfy the program's retirements, they sustained an injury during the program, some may later be recycled for a later academy, some could not simply handle the stress, some could not meet the academy's prescribed academic requirements, and a very small number of them demonstrated a lack of integrity. For example, they were not truthful in their background investigation or their job application, and it was discovered. Some recruits face external challenges, such as a lack of support from family, their significant other, or friends. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we are doing to fill our vacancies. First and foremost, we will not compromise our hiring standards. We believe that we are far better off in the long term by maintaining high standards, even if that means running with vacancies. Rather than send recruits to the two academies we have here in Ventura County, we expanded to two additional academy sessions. Since 2022, we have been sending recruits to Golden West College in Costa Mesa. We recently had five officers graduated from there at the end of June, and currently have three recruits there now. We've also extended our testing to the National Testing Network. In addition to the added advertising, the National Testing Network allows officers to take an accepted written exam for employment from practically anywhere else in the country. Our recruiting team attends numerous venues, such as festivals, resource fairs, and community events. We continue to look for venues where to send them. We continue to advertise, whether it is through several social media platforms, street banners, electric billboards, such as the ones you see at the collection, and as of late, expanding these billboards outside of Oxnard and even California. We are now advertising in places such as Eugene, Oregon, and Las Vegas, with more cities to come. We are currently offering a lateral police officer recruitment incentive. A police officer that laterals to our agency and passes probation will receive $20,000 over three payments. We are also offering a recruitment incentive for those OPOA employees who recruit a police officer or dispatcher. Upon the recruit's successful completion of their probationary period, the recruiting employee would receive a $3,000 payment. We'd like to thank the City Council for giving this program a chance, as they voted to approve this last March. We also believe that joining a particular department may also need to have a good fit for those who want to go into law enforcement. Virtual ride-alongs are one way for potential recruits, among others, in an audience with many interests, to see what we do, how we do it, and how we interact with the police. We do encourage ride-alongs to visit us in person as well. And here is one of our most recent recruitment graphics. This is the one that is also now being seen outside of California. The Oxnard Police Department's website, www.oxnardpd.org, has a lot of information that the public may find helpful. We encourage everyone watching this to visit our website and explore its navigation menu, which you see here highlighted by the yellow arrow. We plan to upgrade the website in the near future with things such as enhanced translation tools, improved content management, and an updated look. Site visitors can also find our office phone and email directories there. Members of the public can also file online police reports or reports suspicious activity. We also receive a lot of questions and correspondence from the public, inquiring about a specific issue, such as traffic complaints, crime issue, or other neighborhood problems. We have a police beat map that shows the public what police beat they live in, as well as who their first line of contact is for problem-solving. We have beat coordinators assigned to these beats. They are police corporals who manage information and provide direction to the beat officers. By starting with your beat coordinator, you can sooner get your report to the person involved with taking action. You can find the police beat map at several locations on our website. And as we draw closer to the end of this update, I'd like to share some information regarding some upcoming events. The Oxnard Police Department Women in Blue, a full-day activity camp for young women ages 16 to 21, will be held on Saturday, October 5th, from 9:00 to 4:00 in our city. This day-long camp will be a good educational event that shows our youth what it is like to be in law enforcement, or more specifically, to be a member of the Oxnard Police Department. There will be staff there doing questions and answers, as well as presentations on a number of topics related to what we do here at the Oxnard Police Department. So we encourage anyone watching this that qualifies to apply at www.oxnapdpolice.info. And on this slide, we would like to highlight a number of events that we have coming up between October and the end of the year. These are all signature events that we engage in each year. The first on the upper left is our annual Halloween Spooktacular, which is essentially a Halloween gathering at the Oxnard Police Station and the surrounding street area. It'll be on Monday, October 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Last year, we had what we estimated to be several thousand people that attended this event, so we want to put it out there. We hope for the great turnout this year. The month of October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and once again, we engage in a campaign to support those persons who have been affected by breast cancer. We will be selling shirts and patches, and we will be raising money to provide to a local nonprofit, the Ventura County Ribbons of Life, to help make the lives better for those persons who have experienced or have been impacted by breast cancer. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I believe that we will be making a stop-off to the City Council during that month as well. We will also be holding some other informational activities, as well as doing outreach to raise awareness about this topic. And in December, our annual Santa-to-the-station event this year will be on Monday. And in December, our annual Santa to the Station event this year will be on Monday, December 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30. We're really looking forward to that and having a great turnout for the, to close out the year, so. And lastly, follow us on one or all of our social media platforms. We have a lot of information out there that we think can be helpful. Watch our videos on YouTube. Join the 58,000 persons who follow us on Facebook, the 48,000 local members from 29,000 Oxnard households who follow us on nextdoor.com, the 26,000 who follow us on Instagram, and the 8,000-plus people following us on X, formerly known as Twitter. And as we draw to a close, I would like to thank the members of the public that took the time to watch this presentation. We hope that there was some informative information that was shared with you, and we would also like to thank our city council for supporting the Oxnard Police Department, as well as thank our community for doing the same. This concludes our presentation.